I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will you all please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Lit?
Here.
Vice Mayor Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Woods?
Here ma'am.
Councilmember Marciano?
Here.
Councilmember Tinsley?
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications this evening?
No ma'am.
Next is announcements and presentations. I would like to call Jeremy Hurd from the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation and the Fire Rescue Command staff to the podium, please.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry I wore the wrong patch tonight. I have a Palm Beach County one on, I apologize. It's where I work, so I apologize to you guys. But I told them it was a privilege to be a part of this. National Fallen Firefighters Foundation has a thing called the 16 Life Safety Initiatives, and those initiatives range from psychological support to health and wellness, and a lot of different factors. And the idea behind it years ago was how do we, as a nation, prevent, initially limit, and then eventually prevent, line-of-duty deaths? And the goal is to continue reducing those. And over years, the numbers have dropped from 125, 120, 100. We're typically down in the 70s and 80s now. Well, Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue has done a phenomenal job in doing this, and I can't read their entire dissertation. I teased them about the fact they did an amazing job writing with some of the things they've accomplished. But they did such a great job, and this is called the Everyone Goes Home Seal of Excellence Award. And the idea is that at every shift change in the morning, the goal is that we serve our customers, we serve our constituencies, citizens and visitors of this area, and that we go home safely. We go home safely mentally, physically, and emotionally. And Palm Beach Gardens has exemplified that, so this is being presented to them officially May 1st, but this is our first time to get together. And so, May 1st, 2021, National Fallen Firefighters Foundation Firefighter Life Safety Initiatives Program, Everyone Goes Home Seal of Excellence Award, presented to Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Leza. I'm the Division Chief of Training and Safety. And on behalf of Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue, we would like to, first of all, thank the council, the city manager, for always being there and financially supporting us. Without your help, we would not have been able to achieve this significant goal, which means a lot to us and all firefighters out there. So, once again, thank you all so much for the support and dedication that you commit to us, and we help provide, help us provide the best service to our citizens of Palm Beach Gardens. Thank you. Oh, I would like to introduce now also Jeffrey Green. He is our local district vice president from 29/28.
Good evening. Short and sweet, I'd like to thank the council, city manager, and our administration for the support, whether it's behavioral, mental, or physical well-being. It's definitely on the forefront of the city and for the firefighters. So, the ability that we know we can come to work and go home safe physically and mentally is a huge acknowledgement that we would just like to say thank you very much.
We took a photo earlier, unless you want to get together altogether? No, 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 I saw you shake your head.
Why don't you go, you guys are very busy.
We're good. Yeah, we're good. Okay.
Before you all leave, I just want to thank you all again for the extraordinary collaboration last week with the fire out in Avenir. I know it was a lot of pressure, and you came through again, so thank you. Next is comments from the public. I have two comment cards for items not on the agenda. Will Ilian Zamlet? Please come up.
So, I think we actually are on the agenda. I may have checked the wrong box, but thank you so much to the council for having me here today. My name is Ilian Zamlet. You all later are going to do a proclamation for Brain Awareness Month and Alzheimer's Awareness Month. So, I just wanted to stand up here and share a little bit of information with you regarding Alzheimer's disease. The disease is personal to me, as my mother's in her ninth year of her Alzheimer's diagnosis. She's in the late stages of the disease, no longer communicates with us verbally or even recognizes us, but she is forever my dad's wife of 54 years and counting, and my mom, who cared for me even when I didn't know that I needed it. So, now it's my privilege to do the same for her. Alzheimer's disease is a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder that tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments, and it's often referred to as the longest goodbye. Over 6.2 million Americans are living with this disease, including an estimated 400,000 under the age of 65 that are living with younger onset Alzheimer's. 580,000 of the 6.2 million patients live in the state of Florida, and 55,000 are our neighbors here in Palm Beach County. Every 65 seconds, someone in the U.S. develops Alzheimer's disease, and it's the sixth-leading cause of death in America, and it's the only cause of death among the top 10 causes of death in the U.S. that cannot be prevented, cured, or even slowed. 11 million caregivers, like my father and I, which is why I'm wearing the yellow flower, provided an estimated 15.3 billion hours of unpaid care, valued at more than $257 billion in 2021. In Florida, over a million caregivers provide over a billion hours of unpaid care, valued at an estimated $16 billion, and it's the most expensive disease in the United States. The direct cost to American society of caring for those with Alzheimer's will total an estimated $355 billion this year. So, given these statistics, most likely you all have had a personal experience with Alzheimer's or dementia. It's vitally important that we're aware of local resources, such as those provided by the Alzheimer's Association that can help navigate diagnosis and living with this disease. Sometimes the diagnosis can be overwhelming, but help is available. So, thank you all again for allowing me to speak today, for the opportunity to honor my mom, and for other patients and families like ours that are currently managing through their longest goodbyes. And we encourage you all to come out and participate in our walk with us, which is happening in West Palm Beach, October 23rd of this year. It will be in person, and form a team, and come out. All the money raised stays local, so I hope you guys come out and join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the city manager's report. Ron, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, council members. A rather lengthy report. Since the lessening of the COVID issues, we've had a bunch of activity going on. It seems like it all comes at once, but I have several reports myself, as well as some of our staff members. First would be Joanne Scaria, Planning Manager, CDBG CARES Act and Mortgage and Rent Assistance. Joanne?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Joanne Scaria, Planning Manager with the Planning and Zoning Department. Tonight, it's my pleasure to provide you several updates on the various U.S. HUD Community Development Block Grant Program that the city currently has going on. The first program I'd like to speak on is the CARES Act applications. This was implemented with the city's allocation of CARES Act funds. It's a rental and mortgage assistance program. And since the program opened on March 5th, we've received 43 applications. 25 of those were for rental assistance, and 18 for mortgage assistance. Of those, nine were denied due to not meeting eligibility requirements or lack of responsiveness. We have 10 pending that we believe will also be denials based on lack of response. We have not moved forward just to provide additional opportunity, but we do have 10 pending. It's exciting to report that we have 12 that have been approved, and we have two pending, four for mortgage and eight for rental. And those 12 applicants have received or have been awarded a total amount of $145,900, for an average of about $12,000 per applicant. So, that's great to see. And I have a statistic that is fresh as of yesterday. With this week's check run, we've issued checks totaling $96,577 for mortgage, rent, and utility payments. That includes FPL, Sea Coast, and Tico. We have seven applications that are under review or we've requested additional information on, and we have 89 applications that have been started in Zoom grants but not submitted yet. So, and I'm receiving requests and inquiries every single day. So, the program is well underway. We've advertised the program many ways. We received some television coverage, as well as advertising on the city's social media and website. And most recently, we did have a full-page article or advertisement in the city's Signature City Magazine. The next program is the city's CDBG Infrastructure Project on Mary Circle and Dania Drive. This was conceptually approved by the council in November of 2020 with the city's five-year consolidated plan and with the adoption of Resolution 632020. Staff has laid out a general timeline of the project, and the first steps include right-of-way acquisition, the HUD-required environmental review, which must be completed before any other steps can take place, and pre-award cost approval. And to elaborate on those first steps, the Mary Circle Right-of-Way is owned by Palm Beach County, and Palm Beach County has been engaged to transfer that right-of-way to the city. The Dania Drive Right-of-Way requires coordination with the residents to transfer the right-of-way to the city. The city has also engaged a consultant to complete the HUD-required environmental assessment, so that environmental review has initiated. And we've also reached out to our local HUD Miami field office to discuss the pre-award cost approval, which allows the city to construct the project on a shorter timeline and then reimburse the city with future CDBG funds. So, as far as next steps, before the council in August, you'll see a request for approval of the second-year action plan for the infrastructure project. We would like to finalize the right-of-way acquisition, environmental review. We will be organizing a community meeting with the residents, and then, most importantly, designing and permitting the water mains in the neighborhood. And then, finally, the city's original CDBG owner-occupied residential assistance program. The program opened in 2016, and we have received 35 applications to date. Of those, eight were either ineligible or non-responsive, but we have completed 19 homes. And we have four homes, or four applications that have currently either been approved or are under construction, and we have four applications that are under review. And this is always something that I always find interesting, is that the average length of residency of the applicants is 22 years. So, a lot of these are, you know, perhaps original homeowners or really long-term residents. We have approximately $272,599 remaining, so enough funds remaining for approximately 11 homes. And these are photos from the most recent project we completed over, I believe, in Palm Beach Square. And this home received impact windows. You can see the difference, what a difference it makes aesthetically and also for the homeowner in terms of energy efficiency and overall enjoyment of their home and safety. So, that is my update. Happy to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. She does a wonderful job. Next would be Chief Epilido, who's going to talk about the Avenir Preserve brush fire.
Good evening. So, just a brief report on the Avenir Brush Fire that occurred last Monday at approximately 10:30 a.m. Our crews were actually alerted to a vehicle fire. So, initially, they thought we were going to a vehicle fire, which turned out to be some heavy machinery inside the preserve as they were clearing some areas out there. That vehicle caught fire, and with the very dry and windy conditions, that vehicle fire quickly spread to the neighboring brush and then quickly got out of control. Approximately 600 acres were involved. You can see the location here, it's just in the northwest area of the, excuse me, Avenir Preserve. This was a collaborative effort among many agencies and some of our internal partners here within the city. Took approximately 53 hours to totally extinguish and deem safe. And all that time, of course, our concern was to make sure that no homes were threatened, and we were successful in that. So, a few aerial photos to see kind of some of the scope and size of the fire. The little ants there on the side here are actually fire trucks. And this is probably 25% of the total area involved that you're seeing. And a ground bird's-eye view from one of our brush trucks as well, they're deep inside the fire. And an incident of this magnitude doesn't happen alone. It takes an incredible amount of cooperation and teamwork by multiple external and internal partners. In this particular fire, a ton of help from Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, who we enjoy a very successful automatic mutual aid agreement with, Florida Division of Forestry, Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office provided their Eagle helicopter with allowing one of our instant commanders to be in the air throughout the first eight hours of this to provide some aerial surveillance and direct our crews to where to go and, of course, where it had to be safe. And from internally, we have a tremendous amount of help from our own internal fleet department. We were quite the envy of a lot of the crews out there, because obviously, an incident of this duration, trucks need fuel and they run out of gas. And we were able to bring our trailer out and to fill vehicles while they were sometimes still pumping water onto the fire. A lot of the other agencies out there were just kind of in awe that we actually had this capability, because, believe it or not, the other way to get fuel is to leave, go to a gas station, and then come back. And on top of that, we also then had the fortune of having our emergency vehicle technicians out there. Robert was out there, along with Chris Danhart, and they were able to address vehicle issues. Of course, these vehicles are out in the woods, you know, things break, the computers start to throw error codes. So, instead of having to take that vehicle out of service, Robert is able to fix and diagnose incidents right away and get these trucks back in service and fight those fires. So, of course, all of that cooperation, all that teamwork, was able to allow our vehicles to continue firefighting operations without any delay of time. And for that, we're obviously very grateful for everyone. Entertain any questions or... Great.
You were able to deploy our brush truck?
Absolutely. So, we have our two brush trucks, I believe we purchased about three or four years ago, have been using multiple fires, in particular this one, and they worked flawlessly. They're designed to actually go into the brush. They're very beefy, four-by-four-looking trucks, and they can get right in there. They carry water as well. So, they'll go in, they'll put some water out, put some water on the fire, come back and refill. The main tactic here on these, a lot of times, is not so much to put a ton of water on it, but we try to keep the fire to burn out to the areas that have no trees and try to keep it back so it runs out of fuel and then eventually dies itself out. But those vehicles were instrumental. In the past, with our older vehicles, it seems like every time we use them, as soon as we use them, they would break down within the first, sometimes, 20 minutes. So, of course, these newer, modern vehicles, they didn't hiccup. So, we're, of course, grateful for that as well.
Chief, I got a question for you. Remember a few years ago, before FPNL broke ground over here, we had that kind of small fire where you were able to put up the drone?
Yes.
Is this too large to use the drone, or did we use the drone?
It was not. We used, so this was very close proximity to North County Airport. And particularly the way the winds were blowing, it was their traffic pattern for where they were on final, so they were very, very low. We used the drone for the first 15 minutes just to ensure that no homes were threatened. Once we were sure no homes were threatened, there was no lives at risk, the drone landed, because we did not feel we could do that for a long term, being safe, at which time we called the sheriff's office helicopter, who was able to give us that same type of footage. So, yes, we did use it, but just because of the proximity of the airport, it just, we didn't feel it was safe.
And because of our fuel truck and our technicians, no vehicles at all had to leave. They continued to fight the fire the entire time. That's great news.
How long did it take to fully extinguish the fire?
53 hours. And it kind of, you know, peaked and valleyed depending on, you know, the wind conditions. At nighttime, things died down, but then the nooks morning, it lighted right back up. So, we had crews there continually for the 53 hours until it was completely safe.
Yeah, thank you guys so much. I mean, this is a perfect example of how every department becomes a first responder, I think, in emergencies like this. Everyone works together, and it just shows, you know, the value in every single one of you. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, these vehicles come in very handy during hurricanes. We use them basically to get fuel out to our response teams, which leads into the very next presentation. David Reyes, our Director of Emergency Management, is going to give you a brief update on our preparations for the hurricane season hopefully we won't have to worry about.
Good evening, council. David Reyes, Community Services Administrator, Director of Emergency Management. Just going to provide you with a brief update on our preparations, pre-storm activities, so you see where we are right now. And, but before we get into that, I want to give you a brief update on the predictions for this year. Hurricane Center is predicting another above-normal season with 13 to 20 storms, named storms this year. Six to 10 of those could become hurricanes, and three to five of those possibility of becoming major storm, meaning category three or higher. The only small good news to this is we are, they are not anticipating the above-normal season we had last year, which was probably close to 30 named storms. So, not that bad, but still, we will be above normal. As per the city preparations, all of our communications protocols are done. We have already completed, all of us are in place. Our emergency response vendors have been notified. All of our contact information is being updated. All of our operating procedures are already being updated and put into place. Our emergency task force teams are ready. And just to talk a little bit about the task force team, many people don't understand what that means. We established six emergency teams that we have out in the city. These teams are comprised of fire, police, public works, community services, leisure services, building inspectors. These teams are located throughout the city in each of the five fire stations that we have in the city, and another team that's located out in the golf course clubhouse, which is a number 16. That team is dedicated to the Western community with all the same resources. All the resources I just mentioned are in each of those fire stations. Each of these teams are designed to operate fully and independently from each other and from the EOC. It's in place because if we lose all communication, they don't have to depend on the communication. They could still go out, respond to our residents quickly and without any issues. And this is very unique to Palm Beach Gardens. You don't see this model. Most of the cities and county, the weather, emergency management works, it's public works in one location, fires in a different location, PD. So, if you need each other, you have to depend on the communication and the radio. You have to request, you have to wait for them to get to you. We don't have that issue. They're all in the same place, ready to go, ready to be deployed, working together as one unit. We also have our rapid response teams. They're also ready, they're part of this team. And what this is, is all of our building inspectors. They're here during the storm, immediately after the storm, they go out and they start assessing all of our residential and commercial properties to determine the conditions and what we need to do. So, we start quickly having a good understanding of what the conditions are, and we know what to do, and we could do it as fast as could be done. We also have several additional support teams. In addition to all this, we have a couple of new teams that are now located at the new operation center. This includes one additional debris team, so we have another team, loaders, and all the equipment, chains, so it's everything we need at the operation center. A stormwater and infrastructure team, this is the ones that go out and make sure that our stormwater systems still working, our bridges. They go out and quickly assess those, and they have the equipment, so if they could make repairs, they could do those at the same time. They're not just assessing, but repairing at the same time. We have four facility teams that quickly go out assessing all of the city buildings and property to ensure that anything that needs to be repaired is done to minimize the damage to our own infrastructure. And we have the two fleet teams, and a better example of the fleet teams you saw today with the presentation, you just saw how they work together with the fire department. And I want you to know, this is what we do every day. Emergency management is not something we only do during the storm. Every time that we respond, we employ our same procedures for emergency management for our day-to-day, just because that gives us more practice and keep everybody on top of their game. We don't have to learn something because we only do it once a year. We do it all year long. In addition to the boots on the ground, we also have drone technology, we just talked about it. We use this technology to quickly go out, have a visual of the city conditions. And once we have an understanding, we know where to send these resources and where they'll be better utilized, so we could have a quick visual instead of waiting for information to come in and ask for help. So, this is just a 50,000-foot view of the entire operation. Emergency management is a lot of moving pieces, and it's a big storm. We could have over 350 employees here during the storm, ready to respond to every one of our residents. But I do want to assure you, we are ready, we're prepared. I do want to remind our residents, it's important to create your own emergency plan. In addition to the fact that we're here, you need to have your own emergency plan. Go to our website, pbgfl.com. We have a new hurricane guide, a lot of great information on what you need to do to have your own plan. So, I highly recommend that our residents do that. And at the same time, you could sign up for notifications and information from the city. So, this is just a brief update, and I'll be more than happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Next, I'd like to bring up our deputy city manager, Steve Stepp, who's been meeting with Lisa Wade, who has asked the council to consider helping out with the football field at Dwyer. Steve has been meeting with those people, and he has an update for you.
Good evening, council. For the record, Stephen Stepp, Deputy City Manager. The council received an email on May 3rd from Lisa Wade, who is a city resident and mother of a football player at Dwyer High School. The email requested the city to help with field conditions at Dwyer High School. At the direction of the city manager, I made contact with Lisa Wade, and we set up a meeting at Dwyer on May 11th. Attendees to this meeting were Lisa Wade, Principal Brooks, the head football coach, and city staff members representing recreation, community services, along with engineering and admin staff. The Dwyer representatives asked the city to consider partnering with them to construct an artificial turf multipurpose field. The staff estimated that this type of field would cost approximately $1.5 million. We brainstormed possible ways to fund this project, including one-cent sales tax monies that come to the school district, a public-private partnership, a booster club, and as a short-term fix to possibly re-sod the current field. Principal Brooks shared that Dwyer is slated to receive approximately $22 million from the one-cent sales tax over the coming years. He indicated that projects that the funding was allocated for were already decided prior to him becoming principal. This included $102,000 to resurface the tennis court this year, and the remaining funds shifted out to 2022 and beyond. Some of the projects at Dwyer included perimeter fencing, a marquee sign, irrigation projects, scoreboards... scoreboards, lockers, a new running track, and a gym floor. However, nothing was included for the football field. We found that when we met with the Dwyer representatives on site, the field was in very poor condition with numerous holes and ruts and bare spots. They indicated that there was a very limited maintenance program for the field. We suggested that the school district reallocate those funds based on a needs priority, including fixing the field so it is not only playable, but safer for the student athletes. However, Principal Brooks stated that the funds were unable, to his knowledge, to be reallocated and were beyond his control. We agreed to meet again in the near future and we would continue to brainstorm to put together cost estimates under several scenarios. We also suggested that in the meantime, parents should contact and/or try to meet with the Palm Beach County District One School Board member Barbara McQuinn to see if she could offer assistance with what they consider unsafe field conditions. Upon further research, it appears that the Palm Beach County School District will receive approximately $1.3 billion from the one-cent sales tax monies. From that funding, almost $30 million appears to be allocated for playfields and outdoor areas over the coming years. The school district has an independent sales surtax oversight committee known as ISOC, which appears to hold monthly meetings that allow for a public comment similar to ours, three minutes per person. It was suggested that the parents express their concerns to this oversight board for reallocation considerations. Additionally, to re-sod the Dwyer field, it would cost approximately $150,000. If re-sod it, the field would also require a higher degree of contract maintenance that is currently unavailable. Since then, we've been in contact, or we've been contacted by the Palm Beach Gardens High School, who heard that we had met with Dwyer about a possible partnership. They also wanted us to partner with them to build a synthetic turf field. We're planning on meeting with the representative from the school board district level on site at Dwyer next week to further the discussion. So in the near term, we're going to have more information and hopefully they can reallocate some of those funding and fundings and we'll try what we can do to help them. And that is my report.
Do you know if anyone, I'm sorry, is it okay if I ask a few questions? Do you know if anyone has asked Ms. McQuinn, since you've met, anyone approach her? She's very smart, very approachable. I would imagine she would have ideas and be able to communicate and help out.
I've asked a couple of times and to date, they haven't made contact with her. They did have contact with a person at the district level by the name of Kyle. I don't know who that is, who said that he would get back with them and hasn't.
Okay, okay. I can try and reach out to Barbara and ask her to get in cut touch with them. She usually responds pretty quickly when I make a phone call. So question remains whether they actually tried to reach out and she hasn't responded or not. So, okay.
I'm not sure. Their field is in bad shape. And in visiting other fields in the area, it may be the worst. I don't know if that's for the whole county, but certainly within the north end, it's in very poor condition.
Would it be appropriate to have Barbara call you too to get the update on everything that's been going on or no? Or just have them reach out to?
I think it would be best if they tried to resolve their problem internally as opposed to getting us involved any further as at this point. We'd be happy to collaborate with them in any way that we can share information. And if they want to include us, we'd be happy to do that. But they haven't even, they haven't gone through their channels yet.
I mean, as far as fields, we have the best, we have awesome fields. We know how to maintain and manage them clearly because they're gorgeous. So I know that if they need assistance in that respect, it would be easy for us to pass along the maintenance program. But, you know, besides, you know, getting, like you said, getting them to speak internally, that is the best solution. But it would be helpful, I think, if.
And reaching out to ISA.
Just to make sure that she knows what's going on is appropriate.
Thank you for all the follow-up.
Okay, the next item I'd like to bring to your attention is our Employee Health and Wellness Center. As you know, we've moved the cap, in our capital improvement infrastructure budget, we've moved the health center from Station 3 to Station 1. That happened after we moved the administration staff out of Station 1 into City Hall. So on April 22nd, you were all there to ribbon cutting and we celebrated our 10th year, improving the health of our employees, reducing costs and saving tax dollars, actually. We, with support of our city council, we've made some great strides over the past 10 years. Before relocating, 77% of available appointments were utilized on an average annually. Now with the new location, with the new doctor and utilization has been increased anywhere from 90 to 94% and as high one day as 98% for the week, not one day, but the week of May 22. So the utilization of that facility has increased dramatically. About an equal percentage of employees use the facility for primary urgent chronicle medical care services. That has saved about $555,000 on an average annual in office visits, labs, medications compared to the private sector. The total cost of approximately $772,000 annually in health claim cost avoidance has resulted in the clinic treating high-risk health conditions as a result of them doing that. So we are saving money and we're providing great health opportunities for all of our employees. And the relocation of the clinic proved to be true to what we were thinking. And I would like to recognize Cheryl Stewart, if you would stand up please, and her staff are the masterminds behind all of this. And she manages this healthcare clinic like it was her own because it is. But she, she works tirelessly with her staff to make sure these things happen and that she manages this facility and our contract with them. Just, I can't speak enough for it. So thank you, Cheryl, and please thank your staff. Next, I'd like to talk about our, I wouldn't like to talk about it, but let me talk about our traffic signal at North Lake, Bay Hill, and Sand Hill Crane Drive. Update on that is that as you're aware, the county had sent us a recommendation that we include four conditions in our interlocal agreement with them regarding the traffic signal. They recognized finally our right to warrant the traffic signal and said that they would be giving us our permit. So our city attorney jumped on that interlocal agreement and got it out in a matter of minutes or day. And we sent that interlocal agreement with the changes that they asked for on May 18th. We haven't heard anything yet, but we asked them to let us put the traffic signal up within 10 days of receiving the issue. So I did call, I did communicate with the county administrator today, who said that she would look into it and get back to me as soon as possible. So we're waiting on that. Coincidentally, on May 18th, I have a traffic crash report. On May 18th at that intersection, there was a traffic accident, basically because of the conflict of the left turns coming out of Bay Hill and one coming out of Ancient Tree. Fortunately, nobody was hurt, wasn't a whole lot of damage, but it's just another example of the conflict at that intersection. And we continue to wait, at the moment anyway, for the county to respond. Hopefully we will hear from them soon. The interlocal agreement was as the last interlocal agreement with the four conditions they wanted in the interlocal agreement. We continue to wait for now. Okay, the next thing, if I can find it here, Bay Hill, hang on. I know that all of you have been asking me and you've been receiving requests from the public about how long we're going to continue the temporary outdoor seating at our local restaurants. I know that's an issue. Well, I think I have good news for you. If you agree, we would like to extend the temporary outdoor seating for another 90 days or until September 30th. Now, we would like to require the removal of the temporary signs, particularly those that are off-premise because a lot of them have deteriorated. And June 30th is already set as the expiration date. So I think that by requiring the temporary signs to be removed and they're already established as June 30th, I think we would be good with that. Now, if we're given time until September 30th, that gives us an opportunity to look at our existing ordinances. We've learned a lot over the last year or so about outdoor seating. And we think that, given the opportunity to review those ordinances, we could sort of modernize some of the language in our ordinances and perhaps be a little more accommodating in the area. So we would look at our process, we would look at our policy. We would obviously engage PGA Corridor Association, the Chamber of Commerce, and together collaborate a little bit and see if we can't bring to you some recommendations as far as changes for the, you know, our new fiscal year. But if we, if you all agree, we will go ahead and require that all the signage comes down by June 30th. And if you agree with the idea here tonight, then we'll extend the outdoor seating issue until September 30th. By then, we think that we could have the information to you and you all could adopt the changes that you feel comfortable with and have everything in line for a little bit more modern approach towards outdoor dining, if you all agree.
I think it's a reasonable way to proceed with this for sure. Things have changed since COVID, so, and I think our businesses will appreciate that. So I'm, I'm good with it. Marcy?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I was wondering, do you need a motion to extend it for the 30 days? Or is that already just a policy?
Just if you're all good with it, we'll move ahead.
I'm good with it. I'm great with it. Thank you.
I wouldn't do it without your all's approval, one way or the other.
Absolutely. It's a smart idea, in my opinion.
Will they put air conditioning outside in September?
What?
Will they put air conditioning outside in the summertime? No, I'm good with it. It's fine.
Okay. Any issues? Well, if with, then we will proceed in that way. And we're going, we have processes where we will inform people. We, we got that covered.
If we have, if we have a hurricane come between now and June 30th, they'll get the temporary signs down as well before then?
You bet. Those types.
Because I've lived here my whole life.
Those types of things happen automatically. The last thing I would like to bring to your attention, I did send to you, I think it was last, last weekend on Friday, the, let me find it here, from the Palm Beach County Property Appraiser, their numbers on our taxable value this year, which is up, according to them, a 3.21%, which we were certainly disappointed in and we don't think it's right. So we questioned the property appraiser's office and we got an explanation. And the explanation is basically, they increased the values of residential properties arbitrarily by 5%. Single-family residents make up about 65% of our community. Condos are another 6%. But they're saying that homestead properties make up 56% of our tax rolls. So even though they raised the properties 5%, because of homestead exemption cap at 1.4% for the 2021 tax roll, that pulled down the total increase when you apply that limitation. So they assessed 5, the 1.4 pulled it down. Commercial properties, they indicated was increased by 3%. And I'll say that what they said was the modest increase forced in the pandemic. Most commercial property owners expect decreases this year. And we did decrease some properties such as hotels, but some commercial property types went up. And we did our best to balance those increases with expectations in the market. We anticipate a large number of appeals this year due to COVID, so we did our best to set the commercial numbers at rates that can be defended and not easily overturned. So basically what they're telling us is that the 1.4 cap pulled our numbers down on residential. And the commercial properties, they adjusted slightly so that they wouldn't be overturned in the value, in the value, what do you call it, the value?
Adjustment board.
Adjustment board. And that's their final word on it, so. I, I, I can't tell you. I don't know, I don't know what the mall's assessment. I'm not sure. I don't know what the mall's assessment is. I don't know if they're going to appeal it or not either. But they set all of these rates and they made our rates lower, our percentage lower in anticipation of people coming and asking for adjustments. So they lowered it for their own purposes. So we will continue to take this information and use this information for, in the preparation of next year's budget. So we'll see how that goes. So unless you have a question, that concludes my city manager report today.
So I started with that, started with that instead of ended with it.
You should have started with that instead of ending with it.
Oh, well.
Question about that, though, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Can those numbers, I mean, that just seems like such an arbitrary thing to do for, for, it's like you're setting a rate in order to protect yourself from potential questioning from, from individuals and their property values.
I agree.
That doesn't seem like it's a market, like a fair, a free market type of system to set, to set a rate that you feel is best as opposed to letting the market set that rate. Certainly there's homeowners out there that are struggling and will struggle because of COVID and unemployment and what have you. And those, those cases should be handled on a case-by-case basis, you would think. How that impacts our city budget is something that I'm curious to see. But is there any chance that that would be altered or changed or this is what it is going to be? Does anybody have an answer?
I get the impression that is what it's going to be. If any or all of you would like to call Dorothy Jackson, get a better explanation, you're certainly welcome to do that.
Is there a process? I know obviously a city can't go through a value adjustment process, but is there a process where they can, where it can be not appealed, but re-looked at?
Well, keep in mind, this is a preliminary June number. We get a final number in July. So I would encourage you to call Dorothy Jackson, have her give you an explanation.
I'd be happy to do that.
All of you.
Sure.
Appreciate the help.
Absolutely. It's what we're here for.
That concludes my report.
That was some report tonight. I think that's the longest one in the four years I've been on campus.
Everything hits at once, or not at all.
I hate to say, when it rains, it pours because I don't. because I don't want to jinx the council chambers.
Well, also, I just want to explain to you, a lot of times, individually, you'll bring up issues and questions. And I don't have, you know, immediate response for you, so I can accumulate these things on occasion. And I don't get a chance to talk to all five of you at once to get your impressions sometimes. So if I can save up some of these things sometimes and bring it, then it just gives the communications to each other at the same time. I think there's some value there.
Works for me.
Agreed.
Next is consent agenda. There are no resolutions on the agenda. Anything, everything good with the agenda? Can I get a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Ordinance 7, 2021, Downtown Palm Beach Gardens, requesting to rezone approximately 49.04 acres. Resolution 27, 2021, Avenir Plan Community Development PCD Master Plan Amendment. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 5?
Ordinance 5, 2021, In Ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Annexing Pursuant to a Petition for Voluntary Annexation, A Parcel of Real Property Comprising a Total of 0.13 Acres More or Less Located on the North Side of Beaumont Drive, Approximately 400 Feet West of the Intersection of US 1 and Beaumont Drive in Palm Beach County, Florida. That is more particularly described herein, declaring that the voluntary annexation petition bears the signature of the owner of the real property annexed hereby, amending Article 2 of the city charter by redefining the corporate limits, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of State, the Palm Beach County Clerk of Court, and Palm Beach County, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Has anything changed since first reading?
No, madam mayor. No changes.
I have no cards on this item. Going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and any, can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make the motion to accept ordinance 5, 2021, on second reading.
I'll second.
I'm going to bring it back for discussion. Anyone have any discussion on this?
Not if there's no change, if there's no change, then.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Ordinances 6 and 7 will be a combined presentation. However, for each ordinance, we will separately have the title read, open the public hearing, declare ex parte on ordinance 7, and then vote on each. So will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 6, 2021?
Ordinance 6, 2021, In Ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Adopting a Large-Scale Amendment to Its Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida Statutes, specifically Section 163.3184 et sequintes Florida Statutes, pursuant to Application Number CPMA-20-04-000030, in order to change the land use designation on 49.04 acres from Palm Beach Gardens Professional Office PO to Palm Beach Gardens Mixed Use MXD, providing a notation on the future land use map pertaining to the permitted land use density and intensity related to the subject property. The subject property being located on the east side of alternate A1A between Kyoto Gardens Drive and Gardens Parkway, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida Statutes, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, and other reviewing agencies, providing that the future land use map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes. Note to the public, there is a sign-in sheet at the front desk for anyone wanting additional information from the Department of Economic Opportunity.
I'd like to open the hearing, and we will have our presentation at this time.
Great. Good evening, council. For the record, Nicole Plunkett, Cottler in Hearing, 1934 Commerce Lane, Suite 1, Jupiter, Florida 33458, and I have been sworn in. Good evening, Mayor Litt, Vice Mayor Reed, council members. It's so, so exciting to be in front of you tonight with all of the developments and transformations of Downtown Palm Beach Gardens. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to do a combined presentation for ordinance 6 and ordinance 7 together. Downtown Palm Beach Gardens is the 49.04 acres located just along PGA Boulevard and alternate A1A. After many, many years of the strategic planning, we are so excited to finally be taking those final steps towards the transformation of Downtown Palm Beach Gardens. We've had a chance to go out there, as I know many of you have. It is very much under construction. There are a lot of moving pieces. Lifetime Fitness is under construction right now, along with all of the in-place improvements to the architectural facades, hardscape, landscape, which you approved last summer as well. So lots of movement going on, and we're so excited to be here this evening. So after many years of strategic planning, not only does this area very, very important to the city, but also expanded to look at the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Studies, all of the mobility options which have been vetted throughout the years, and of course, the transit-oriented redevelopment. So these options and these items are just so important for the center and just really looking for the future and preparing for the future. So tonight's request is a comprehensive land use map amendment, ordinance 6, 2021. We're requesting approval to change the future land use designation from professional office to mixed-use development. Ordinance 7, 2021, we are requesting a rezoning to rezone the property from underlying general commercial CG1 and professional office PO to a mixed-use MXD zoning. And we do have our entire team here tonight who have worked on the land use and rezoning. We have Kevin Meisewick, on behalf of the applicant with ShopCorps Properties, who joins us from Chicago, along with Donaldson Hearing, Cottler in Hearing, and of course, our attorneys from Gunster and Matheson Whittles are here tonight as well. So it's truly been a collaborative effort, and I'm just excited to be up here representing the entire team. Downtown Palm Beach Gardens is located within what we call the regional center PCD. So it's a much broader portion of area, including the Garden Mall, all the way down to Prosperity Farms. This parcel of land was originally within a DRI, which is a development of regional impact. And many, many years ago, when the DRI came about, it was designated for particular land uses, including residential, commercial, and professional office. So as you can see in our future land use map on the left-hand side of the screen, we are currently have a land use of professional office. Now, we have many different types of uses on the site today, which go well above and beyond what you would consider professional office, retail, restaurant, health, health and fitness, and of course, looking ahead into the future with the residential and mixed-use tower portions of the uses. And so with this request, on the right-hand side of the screen, we're showing our proposed future land use map of a mixed-use land use designation. And really, this is much more consistent with the comprehensive plan for the city, the uses that are out there on the site today, and the uses looking into the future as well. And you also want to note that that DRI was rescinded back in 2012. So this is just much more appropriate for the site today. Also proposed within our land use modification, this will be a result in a reduction of intensity, changing it from professional office to mixed-use land use. And above and beyond this, we are going to be placing a footnote on the future land use map, which voluntarily restricts the intensity and density within our proposed site plan. We have analyzed the level of service, and we've worked with staff on this. And the items that I want to put on the record that we did address include traffic, water and sewer service, drainage, solid waste, public safety, working with the fire and police departments with the City of Palm Beach Gardens, school concurrency, and recreation. So it was concluded that we have adequate capacity for these items. Moving on to the rezoning request. Our subject site, Downtown Palm Beach Gardens, currently exists within a PCD overlay with the underlying general commercial CG1 and PO professional office. Now, we're looking to maintain that PCD overlay. However, we're looking to rezone the underlying zoning to mixed-use development. And truly, this is just a cleanup item that goes hand-in-hand with the land use request, and it really just provides for additional consistency and compatibility. There are a number of properties along the PGA Corridor that have this type of use and mixed-use designation. And some of these properties include Midtown, PGA Commons, PGA Station, and Legacy Place. And this truly just provides a consistency with what we already have out there today. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I really appreciate your time and look forward to answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff have a presentation?
No additional staff presentation. The applicant was very thorough and accurately represented the request. I do want to make mention, for the benefit of the public who is following this petition, there is a petition for site plan approval that will be brought before the council at a future date. And it likely may be later on this summer. But at this point in time, there is nothing proposed with the subject petition in terms of buildings, or architecture, or anything with the site plan. It is exclusively for a zoning and a land use. And staff is recommending approval of ordinance 6 and ordinance 7.
Are there any questions?
I think I have one. I'm going to sound dumb, because I don't know. Can you explain to me the difference in changing of the zoning and what it is now and how it's affecting it now, and why they want these particular changes? And is it just because we're going to add residential into that area? They need a zoning change for that? Or because it might help me make my decision better as we go forward with downtown? If I can understand these zoning changes, because they're a little more in-depth than, you know, what we know on the surface?
Sure. I'm happy to take a stab at that. So I think it's, sorry, my mic is, I'm happy to take a stab at that. I think that most definitely, the request that you have before you from the applicant is linked in, it's intrinsically linked to the plan that you will see coming before you later on. But even as a standalone request, staff would wholeheartedly support this request. It really aligns the vision of what we would like to see in our TOD. So even if the future plans, for some reason, didn't move forward, this request makes all the sense in the world. It's moving forward to mixed use. Mixed use is exactly what we would like to see in our TOD. It cleans up many of the inconsistencies with the regional center map H, which was done just a long time ago. And when you think about the existing land use designation and the rezoning, you know, really, this is bringing it into conformity with the existing conditions. It's a commercial operation. So it will allow for the residential. It will allow for the land use patterns that we really need in our TOD. So even as a standalone request, it makes a lot of sense. But it most definitely is linked into the overall.
All right, thanks.
Marc, anything?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Marcy?
No questions.
Just looking forward to the mixed use, changing how we treat pedestrians in that area, especially in having it close to what will be our train station. All adds up.
And it definitely seems to make sense to me with the zoning of all of the neighboring parcels, keeping the TOD consistent. I think that's important going forward, so.
Hold on a second. This has nothing to do with it. Where are we at with the movie theater? Are they going to, are we going to drag them along? Or, because I'm going to get this out there, and so many people at that movie theater moving forward. And what are we doing with that?
Mike.
Good evening. Kevin Meisewick with ShopCorps Properties, 233 South Whacker Drive, Chicago, Illinois. Good evening, council members, Mayor Litt, Vice Mayor Reed. The movie theater, just kind of give it in broad strokes, all good news. The Cobb Theaters were acquired by CMX. Actually, CMX is headquartered, this is down in South Florida, in the Miami area, if not Miami proper. As many businesses in the entertainment industry suffered during COVID, CMX went through bankruptcy. The good news is that they felt that the theaters at Palm Beach Gardens were one of the properties worthy of emerging from the bankruptcy. 31, I think, in total. They closed several other theaters in Florida, no less, in that. They are, they have, as part of that, and part of an agreement with us, ShopCorps, they are putting in place plans for a renovation. And they will be retrofitting. Those plans include retrofitting the theaters to a recliner theme, as well as doing more, setting up the lobby and entrance area to something more contemporary. And those, we understand that they're in the process, if they haven't already, to file their demolition permits with the city. And then we still have a few more review engagements with them on the theater plans.
All right. Thank you for answering that, because it didn't have anything to do with this topic. But, you know, we might not talk to you for another two or three months. And, you know, people want to know what's going on with the movie theater. People want to know what's going on with music. So, you know, feel free to give us updates. You know, come in for five minutes and let us know. Because once you get that done, that is going to be the biggest diamond in northern, or all of northern Palm Beach County. You won't be able to find a seat or a parking spot. So people ask, I want to ask, and I might not see you for two months. So, what was that?
I think we're going to have parking. I'm hopeful about that.
Yeah, a lot of parking, I know. Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it.
I'm going to close the hearing, if nothing else. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
Make a motion to accept ordinance 6, 2021, on first reading.
Let the boys motion and second. All right, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Guy's got a motion and a second.
Will the clerk please read the title of ordinance 7, 2021?
Ordinance 7, 2021, In Ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Rezoning Certain Real Property, Such Property Being Comprised at 49.04 Acres in Size More or Less and Located on the East Side of Alternate A1A Between Kyoto Gardens Drive and Gardens Parkway, Providing That This Parcel of Real Property, Which Is More Particularly Described Herein, Shall Be Rezoned From Planned Community Development PCD Overlay With An Underlying Zoning Designation Of General Commercial CG1 And Professional Office PO To Planned Community Development PCD Overlay With An Underlying Zoning Designation Of Mixed Use MXD, Providing That The Zoning Map Of The City Of Palm Beach Gardens Be Amended Accordingly, Providing A Conflicts Clause, A Severability Clause, And Authority To Codify, Providing An Effective Date And Further Purposes.
I'm going to open the hearing, and I would like to ask for expertises. Mars?
Yes, I'd like to ex parte. I did meet with the applicant-
I did meet with the applicant, Kevin Meislowich, hopefully I didn't kill your last name, his representatives, Dawn, Steve Matheson, Nicole, and I also would like to ex parte, meeting with Brian Seymour, even though that was prior to me being sworn in. I'm still going to ex parte it, just in case.
So my ex parte is on January 13th. Kevin was kind enough to show me around the in-place with a hard hat and everything, which was great. February 8th, I met with Lisa Beers, who was curious about the refurbishment. She's the president of the Landmark. April 8th and 9th, I did text and have some phone calls with both Steve Matheson and Kevin to review lease negotiations with tenants. I've walked the property happily several times, excited about what's happening, and congratulations on REI going in. And on the 20th, I was able to have the applicant and staff official meeting in our city manager's office. And just recently, again, on June 1st, I spoke again with Lisa Beers, the president of the Landmark, who is voicing her support and thanks.
Three weeks ago, I did a site visit with Kevin Meislowich, and then last week, I had a meeting with Kevin and the entire team and staff.
Yeah, I met with staff. Don't know the exact date, but it was about a week and a half ago. I also met with Kevin and Steve Matheson in April. Also walked the property with Kevin back in January, I think it was. And, yeah, I had pizza there last Tuesday and walked it again, so all looks good. Thank you.
Carl?
I actually have none because I wanted to stay away from it, knowing this presentation. I know we had the opportunity to meet with you guys. I declined it because I knew it was going to be here, and I wanted to hear it for the first time, just like everybody else. So, no, I refused any meetings on this particular topic.
Okay. No presentation because that's already been completed.
And so just for the record, we'll incorporate the comments and the testimony from the previous hearing into this one.
Okay. I do not have any comment cards on this item. So I'm going to close the hearing and ask for a motion and a second to approve.
I'd be happy.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
There you go.
Can we second it?
Mark?
Mark Scott.
I'm in.
We're having a contest up here.
We got to scream to get a motion in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks, guys. Good presentation. Appreciate it, Mark.
Thank you.
Another quasi-judicial hearing. Will the clerk please read Resolution 27, 2021?
Resolution 27, 2021. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a planned community development PCD amendment to the Avenue PCD master plan to modify parcel boundaries, including creation of a new internal parcel, shift entitlements between parcels, modify the PCD internal roadway network, including adding driveway connections, revise PCD and roadway buffer landscape plans, update development standards, and modify certain conditions of approval in Resolution 4, 2016. The subject site is 4,763 acres, more or less, and is generally located on the north side of North Lake Boulevard, east of Great View Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, providing an effective date for other purposes.
I'm going to open the hearing. Are there any expertises on this? I will start with Carl this time.
Negative.
Mark?
Yes, April 22nd, met with Rosa and Danny, did a tour of the property again, and had staff meeting the other day.
Let's see. On April 9th, I had a tour of the general area and the clubhouse with Rosa Schecter and Danny Lopez. On May 3rd, I got to go into the trails where the fire recently was, so it'll be interesting to see what changed there. And May 7th, I had an unrelated meeting with Ken Tuma.
I'd like to ex parte. Two weeks ago, I had a tour at Avenue with Rosa, and I also have had several conversations with Ken Tuma prior to me being sworn in, but I'm going to put that on the record anyway.
And four weeks ago, I had a tour of the property with Rosa, and on Monday, I spoke with Rosa by phone to check in on the fire site. Okay, so petition or presentation?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Ken Tuma with Urban Design Studio. My address is 610 Clemadus Street, and I've been sworn in here today on behalf of Avenue. And the item in front of you this evening is a PCD amendment. I think, going back to 2016, as I kind of sit back from the approval, I think the one thing I said that night is, whatever the plan is we have in front of you today, I promise you, it won't be the plan when this is built out 20 or 30 years from now. So this is a revision to the overall master plan. It's kind of basically three buckets of changes. One are changes to the actual plan. The second bucket, it changes to the development standards. And the third one are truly cleanup items. The developer here is looking to the future, knowing that this is a long build-out on the project, so they've given us the opportunity to take the time to work with your staff and come up with solutions for future planning. I'm going to walk through it. I do have about 10 slides, so it's a little longer tonight, but I'll get through it. This is the Avenue PCD. You have seen this before you. This is, in essence, what is approved today. So just a quick view and aerial of what's going on in Avenue. For those who haven't had the opportunity, it sounds like most of you have been out there lately, but the aerial view is very informing. Here is North Lake Boulevard, and this is Avenue Drive, as it goes all the way around the project. This is the future city golf course here in the upper right-hand side. On the right-hand side, this is KenCo Communities. They are building and delivering houses there. And then the left-hand side, this is Toll Brothers. Toll Brothers building, delivering, and having residents live within that community. You have new residents in the city of Palm Beach Gardens who live in this left-hand side. They have closed homes. Here's Kay Hobnian. This is Toll Brothers' next parcel. And then this parcel here is Toll Brothers Retirement Community called Regency, which I know their sales are very significant. Up here is the Pulte Project. Pulte has closed on a portion of the project, and they'll be coming before you soon with their architectural renderings. Over here on the left-hand side, this blank space here, this is the Town Center. The Town Center has been working through the process over the last year, went to a workshop last year in the Planning and Zoning Board, and working with your staff, one of the changes tonight affects that Town Center, and it affects it in a way to allow it to be active during the course of the day. We're shifting office square footage into that Town Center. It's an exciting design change. Really happy working with everybody on that to come up with a solution that makes sense. So this is the request. As I said, there's kind of three buckets. There's this master plan bucket, there are development standards. Remind you, these are the development standards, this booklet that goes along with the project. And then there are conditions of approval cleanup items for both that and the PCD buffers. The master plan amendments, there are a couple. On the right-hand side, there's five bullet points. I'm going to walk you through each one of those individually. The first one is we're adding additional driveways along North Lake Boulevard. Identified in red on the screen in front of you are two additional driveways. Initially, there were seven driveways approved. We're requesting nine driveways as a total. Kind of for a frame of reference, in the Town Center, we're asking for an additional driveway, so there'll be a total of three entrance points into the Town Center. For a frame of reference, Alton Town Center, which I know you've all been to and like, Alton Town Center has three entrance points also. So if you can envision, if I don't mess this up, this being Alton Drive and not Avenue Drive, and then there were three other entrance points. It's exactly the same distance and same request. On the Workplace District, on the left-hand side or the west side, this distance is 2,220 feet. So it's a very long distance. We're requesting a second driveway. This driveway will be a right-in and a right-out only, and this will be a full intersection lining up with a proposed intersection across the street on a project that was approved within Palm Beach County. The next change is the reallocation of the 400,000 square feet of professional office here in Parcel C. We're requesting to reallocate it to three different areas. And basically, what we're doing is we're reallocating, creating new land area. Here, Parcel J, in the bottom left-hand corner, oh, this is 140th Drive in the western part of Avenue, we're going to be placing approximately 156,000 square feet and adding about 16 acres into professional office. We'll be shifting approximately 123,000 square feet to Parcel D. And then the part that I discussed earlier is adding 120,000 square feet to the professional office, to the Town Center. So kind of a little bit more in detail about this. We've created 16.27 acres of land that were in other uses, adding up to 156,000 square feet of professional office at that intersection here in the bottom left-hand corner. And it's a new parcel. It's called Parcel J. So also, as we get to the development standards, we had to modify the development standards because we added a new parcel. And this is in a little bit more blow-up in detail. Here is Parcel D, where we're shifting 123,000 square feet. We've added 11.47 or 11.6 additional acres into the Workplace District to allow for that square footage to be placed there. And then we're also shifting 105,000 square feet of retail to the Town Center, leaving 50,000 square feet of retail within the Workplace District. That retail has to be in a format that it is an accessory to an office building, specifically on the ground floor or incorporated within an office building, so it would create some nice activity centers within that Workplace. The final shift is to 120,000 square feet to the Town Center District. So the Town Center District, creating this nice roadway going through the center of it, a premier roadway, which will allow for both retail and then office, and then terminating on a residential component at the end. There are townhomes at the end. So the idea of that is to have that premier road. And then that way, the Town Center's activated during the day with having office within it instead of it just being a retail center and a residential center. Now we get to create all three components. One of the other changes to the master plan is the parcel of land here, where the economic parcel is, that's being converted to residential development. We are not adding any more density. There are no more homes being added. It's just creating that area, spreading out the homes a little bit more. And then removing this roadway now because the economic development parcel is no longer here, that roadway isn't necessary, and we're also adding an additional roadway onto the master plan. So this area in red down here is an additional roadway we've added to the master plan. The purpose of that is to show clarity for now and the future. As I said earlier, we have people moving in, we have tenants, we have all kinds of things happening, so we want to make sure there's some clarity. There's always been planned a road there, but with the removal of this connection point and the suggestion of your staff, we now have added it to the master plan, so it's clear. It does have a note on it that is conceptual, so it can move over a little bit one way or the other, but allows it to be identified within the master plan. The next item is Florida Power and Light and a Transmission Line. FPL is building a substation within Avenue right now, but they also need to work on their grid in that area, and it's important, not just for Avenue, but for the entire north area, that they have a transmission line come to the site. That transmission line will start at Corbett, it will go through Mecca Farms, and then ultimately come through Avenue and land at this substation, which is under construction right now. That transmission line is an important component to the heart, to the electrical grid within the area, but it does go through one of our conservation areas. Now, in that conservation area, it's basically, it's putting one of those big transformer, big transmission poles in there, all the way down. So that area, it'll be a transmission line with a little roadway underneath it. But it is going through the conservation area, so we are replacing that conservation area. So giving you a little bit more detail, here on the left-hand side of your screen, you can see where the transmission line comes in. It's approximately 75, 77 feet wide. There'll be poles going through here and a road around the poles coming into the transmission line. To handle that situation, Avenue has agreed to place 2.13 acres, just a little bit more land in the preservation than what is being taken out of preservation, though it truly isn't being taken out of preservation. Yes, it's going to have a power line through it. Yes, there are going to be no tall trees through there, but it's still part of the preservation track and will allow animal-wildlife connections to go through there. Development standards, the book. So within the book, there are a couple standards that we're going to be requesting to change, and I'm just going to jump right to the standards. Within the first one, within Parcel D, which is the Workplace District, we're requesting to add restaurant uses within the Workplace District, and it has to be limited to being accessory with the office. So that's a request here. And then in the Town Center, we're requesting drive-through for specialty restaurants. And as you know, a specialty restaurant in the city of Palm Beach Gardens is a coffee shop. It's not a Taco Bell. So our request is to allow a Starbucks or something similar to have a drive-through within the Town Center District. The next update, our convenience store with gas station. The current plan for the Town Center does not show a gas station, but we suspect that it might one day. There's going to be 4,000 new homes, a million square feet of potential office, and all kinds of development in that area. At the time, the plan, the conceptual plan that we're working with, does not have it, but we suspect there may be one. So we're asking to add it to the design standards to allow it to be a request to this board as a major conditional use in the future. The next one, the next change, is a request to have a drive-through for the grocery stores. Similar to Alton Town Center, as you know, that Publix has a pharmacy, and the pharmacies want a drive-through. So that's the same request, so it'll be very similar in design and similar in concept to allow for a drive-through within the pharmacy, or within the Publix, excuse me, within the grocery store. I didn't say that out loud. Within the grocery store, to allow for, similar to Alton Town Center's Publix. The next item is to change the Premier Street. The person who authored this document thought that East-West Road was going to be the most important. Well, he was wrong, and it should have been a North-South Road. So this is going to become the Premier Street coming to Town Center, and I'm so excited to share with you, the Town Center, when it gets here, it's quite a ways away, but hopefully in the fall, you'll get the chance to see it. It has buildings on the east and west side of the road. It's going to be a really unique environment terminating within some townhomes. So it'll be a very good design. The other item is allowing for on-street parking on a secondary street in the design standards to allow that to become optional in certain places. And then the development standards update is really to allow Parcel J to have uses because we've added this new parcel. We've had to add a whole new category. These are the same uses that it was allowed, the square footage was allowed to be when it was in the economic parcel. Cleanup items, we have about two or three cleanup items, and I'll be done. The first cleanup item has to do with the conditions of approval. One of the good things about taking a look at this master plan and with your staff, given the opportunity, we've had five years to work with it, so we've seen some things that we need to fix. Or "fix" might not be the right term, but "make" easier to use. The first one has to do with the traffic conditions. In essence, we're requesting to add the officially approved trips within the development order itself. Those trips are there today. Those trips are an exhibit to the initial development order, a proportionate share agreement that was approved by Palm Beach County, that Mr. Warwick then had an exhibit to it. So it goes from the development order to the proportionate share to the exhibit to the study. Just to make it clear, because this is a long project for the next 20 to 30 years, we want to make it clear to allow for those trips to be within the development order, so we're not searching for them. And the same thing with Condition 6, where we're clarifying how the city operates within regards to issued building permits for how trips are determined. The final condition was, well, we now have nine entrances instead of seven, so we've got to cross through and add nine there. The next set of cleanup items are cleanup items that you've actually already approved, but the ownership here recognizes that this is a long-term project and for the next 20 to 30 years. And also turnover. One day will come. While we have the first homeowner within Avenue, we're a long ways from turnover, but the thought process here is to clean it up, to allow it to be easier to read on these large projects. Typically, the process works, you do the PCD approval, you may amend that PCD approval by individual site plans and administrative amendments, and that works really well from a system standpoint, on a smaller project, but on a project worth 30 years, what we want to do is go back and bring all those changes back into the original approval. That way, you're not having, whoever the entity is, 20, 30, 40 years from now, isn't having to rebuild all the history of administrative amendments and also site plan approvals. And this is really, only thing this affects is the landscape plans. As you know, the landscape plans have taken a change through the site plan approval process. I'm not going to walk you through what changed because it's already built, but these were part of your site plan approval process, and it's what allowed Avenue to develop as it is today. We're just requesting to bring it into the PCD, so it's consistent. And with that, I'm done. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Is there a staff presentation?
No, Madam Mayor. The applicant was, again, very comprehensive, so staff is recommending approval of Resolution 27, and we are happy to answer any questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I do not have any comment cards on this item, so I will close the hearing. I need a motion and a second to approve. Should I look down this way this time?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back for discussion. Anyone have any discussion or questions?
I, I just want to, if I may, Madam Mayor, I think that it was a smart change to move the uses into the Town Center, obviously being a mixed-use project in that respect, traffic, pedestrian, all of the, you know, the reasons, so I appreciate you doing that. And then I did, when reviewing the landscape plans, I did make a comment to staff, because I know you guys were doing cleanups, and I saw you trees in the utilities in the cross-section, so, as you know, that's one of my pet peeves of utility easements and overlap, and making sure we don't squeeze the buffers down to where there's no place for vegetation, so just as a, an encouragement that that doesn't occur in the future. But, thank you there very much for doing that, because I think it's a smart move.
If anything that the last year has taught us is that things can change very quickly. So, the, the changes, adding the drive-throughs, having more uses within the Town Center, bringing the offices in there so that people can, can work and go to lunch and go to the store and, and do it all in one place, that's the whole idea, is to capture as much as we can and eliminate as much traffic as we can. So, I actually think most of the changes, if not all of the changes on here, make a lot more sense than the way it was before. And the only question I had, I had posted at the agenda review, was Parcel J was created out of part of the Ag Parcel and part of Parcel A.
Correct. It's part residential and a small part of the agricultural area, yes ma'am.
Okay. Anybody else?
I echo what she said.
Okay.
Okay, in that case, hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. Thank you, Ken. Will the clerk please read the title for Resolution Twenty-eight, Two Thousand and Twenty-One?
Resolution Twenty-eight, Two Thousand and Twenty-One, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the design, survey, and permitting services related to providing a westbound right-turn lane roadway improvement at Northlake Boulevard and Osprey Isles Boulevard as part of the Neighborhood Improvement Assessment Program, NIAP. Authorizing the necessary expenditure of funds to pay for the design, survey, and permitting services needed to create estimates for the NIAP, authorizing the city manager to take all action necessary to effectuate services for the improvements, providing effective date and for other purposes.
Staff presentation, Mr. Engel.
Good evening, Council. Todd Engel, City Engineer, representing Resolution Twenty-eight, Two Thousand and Twenty. We had a request from Osprey Isles to put in a westbound turn lane on Northlake Boulevard as it approaches their entrance, for safety and for other reasons out there, the speed of the road. So we did an initial survey of those residents to see if they were interested in us conducting a, a NIAP program, which we actually put up the money and they pay back over time. And we got fifty-one percent of those residents to say, yes, we are interested in this, so that starts our, our program. So the improvements that we're looking at is a turn lane into Osprey Isles. Now, there will be a widening of Northlake Boulevard in this area, and our hopes is to get this done fast enough so we can include it in that widening of Northlake Boulevard. So they'll put the extra lane in, they'll put the turn lane in there. Some of our challenges is obviously FPNL is in there, we do have some water mains in there, we have AT&amp;T, Comcast is in there, we got to relocate sidewalk, and we need to exist in some additional right-of-way in there. Osprey Isles has agreed to donate that right-of-way to its free and clear, wouldn't make any sense to buy it from them and then they pay us back over ten years for that particular improvement. So the estimate of the improvements is roughly four-hundred-thousand dollars, and it all, and then there's seven-to-five-thousand dollars that we're going to approve here tonight. Some of the unknowns is the utility relocation, whether FPNL is going to require those to go underground, whether we have to underground some of the other utilities that are out there, whether they'll stay above ground. So the total estimate is about four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars for the project. We're requesting tonight seventy-five to get design, survey, get to the permitting costs, and get the actual cost of the project. So we'll bid the project and get the actual cost of the project. We do have Palm Beach County, who owns Northlake Boulevard, did say that they are willing to permit this, we won't have to go through a warrant process, this will be permitted, and hopefully, again, it will be done with the Northlake Boulevard improvements. So where we are tonight is to approve that seventy-five-thousand dollars for the initial phase, and then once we complete the design, the permitting, get the actual cost, we'll hold a public hearing, most likely here in this room with the residents, to go over the actual cost and the actual improvements, and then we'll conduct the final survey to judge the interest of those residents. But it's very important to note that this will come back to this council for final decision. Whether they approve it, or whether they do not approve it, it's the final decision is at this council level. And then, it'll be an assessment, what will be agreed upon, last time we did, it was ten years at five percent. So that's what we're approving here tonight. Are there any questions?
I have two questions. The first one, when is the Northlake improvement supposed to go forward in that section? So when would this?
The plans are about ninety percent done, there is a holdup right now with West Palm Beach has filed a lawsuit, or more of an objection to the permit from South Florida Water Management District, because some of this area actually drains into Ibis. So, that's being held up, we're trying to work through that process right now. Like I said, the plans are ninety percent, Palm Beach County is almost at the point where they can issue the permit, but we got to get over the hurdle of issuing a South Florida permit.
And the second question is, the seventy-five thousand that we're considering tonight, if it does get approved by Osprey Isles, that gets factored into what there will be assessed?
Yes, that will go back in.
And if it does not, then the city is?
That is at risk to the city.
At risk.
And that's the way the program is designed.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
I'm sorry, if it is not, then it's what? Can you clarify that?
We absorb that cost as a city.
And where would those funds be coming from, in that case?
Currently, right now, we had an excess in the last NIAP program that we did, and we're funding that seventy-five-thousand dollars out of that account right now.
Okay. I do have one card on this item, will Matthew Camula please come to the podium? Thank you, Todd.
Good evening, once again, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Council members. May it please the Council. My name is Matthew Camula, and my address is nine-six-seven-eight Osprey Isles Boulevard, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, three-three-four-one-two. I'm also appearing before you here as the President of the Osprey Isles Homeowners Association. There are several owners from Osprey Isles here tonight as well, and I'd certainly like to acknowledge their presence. I certainly don't clear a room, we still had two. I am here to urge an affirmative vote on Resolution Twenty-eight, Two Thousand and Twenty-One, to install the right-hand turn lane into Osprey Isles. Getting to this point has taken approximately six years of time, effort, meeting with city, county commissioners, FPNL. Our Board identified the need for a right-hand turn lane six years ago, and we proceeded forward. At that time, Osprey was in unincorporated Palm Beach County. We were told by the powers that be in unincorporated Palm Beach County, that Osprey Isles didn't have the requisite right-hand turns into our community. We didn't have them in two thousand and seven, when nobody was living in Osprey, and we didn't have them in two thousand and fifteen, when we started this process, when one-hundred-and-one homes had already been built out. The community continued to receive a no to this request. Then we were annexed into the city of Palm Beach Gardens. We brought the issue to the city, and the community received a "let's see what we can do" attitude. Then the community, after further meetings, discussions, received a "this is how it can be done," with a fifty-one percent of your residents surveyed to move forward. And tonight, we are here. We are grateful for the city's assistance in helping Osprey get to this point, as it has been a very long journey for our Board and our Board Officers. In conjunction with urging an affirmative vote on the resolution, praise fervent wish, prayer, whatever you would like to say, to coordinate with Avenir and the, the Northlake widening that is Avenir's responsibility, so that the turn lane and widening actually come together in a coordinated effort, so we break Northlake once, we install once, and then everybody goes home and lives happily ever after. The coordination definitely will result in the least disruption to our residents. Thank you very much for your consideration of both the resolution affirmative and the request to coordinate the lane construction with the Northlake widening. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Carl has a question for Todd.
Yes. I need to go back, I don't know if this is a Max question or a you question, I need to go back to who filed the lawsuit, who filed the lawsuit, lawsuit against who about moving a certain amount of water, because?
Again, it wasn't a lawsuit, it was an objection to a South Florida Water Management District permit. So as, we were widening, as Avenir came in to widen the section in front of Publix and Ibis, a certain amount of water, which was already permitted, needs to go west, or needs to go south into the Ibis system.
Okay.
And so, because West Palm controls that, they objected to the South Florida Water Management.
So it's more like an arbitration kind of a thing?
That, they're working through that process now.
So are they objecting to, because this is going to continue for a long time, are they objecting just to this particular project, or is this for the lengthening of the entire Northlake Boulevard, because this is going to go on and on and on and on and on if we can't get this objection cleared up and?
In my opinion, what the objection is, is State Road Seven. It has everything to do with State Road Seven.
Right.
If, if I may offer some information. While they are objecting to the drainage on State Road Seven, we have been in conversation with Avenir and are reaching perhaps a solution that will eliminate the delay in the project. We hope to bring that to you soon, so I, I'm optimistic they'll be able to work that out.
Yeah, that was just a gray area for me, Todd, this is the first time I heard of an objection, because how many feet is this turn lane? I'm like?
This, it, it has nothing to do with this project. We wanted to bring it into the Northlake Boulevard project, and that was just delayed for a little while.
Understood. Thank you for clearing that up.
Okay. But you can't, South Florida, e- even though there is an objection, can't they still move forward with the permit nonetheless?
They can.
I mean, they have in the past with objections.
They've got to work through those issues.
We got to protect the water in that area, I mean, that's a given.
Got it.
And somehow, we got to move, we got to address the traffic safety issues and, and take care of the ecosystem, so. But I thought the objection was to this turn lane, I'm like, how can you object to fifteen-hundred feet of asphalt? Okay.
Two-hundred-and-eighty with a fifty-foot taper.
Yeah.
But like Matthew said, we want to get it, just do this once, so if we can get it done all at the same time, that would be the right way to go.
Absolutely.
Okay, can I?
I do have a question before we, so, this seems like such a no-brainer, for a hundred-and-fifty-six dollars a year, for your residents in Osprey, and for everybody that drives up and down that road, why is there any opposition in your community? Matthew, do you have any, I mean, what are your residents that are opposed to this? What are they, are they opposed to the cost, or they don't think it's needed, or, I mean, what, what's the reason for that?
Maybe they didn't vote.
No, because, because some people didn't vote, but then those that voted, some people voted no.
Right, right.
And I have no idea why anybody would be opposed to that.
There are some people that do not wish to be assessed anymore in dollars.
So it's just a financial thing?
It's a financial impact. The way the Board sold it to the community was, in addition to annexing into the city of Palm Beach Gardens, we also fell heir to Seacoast Water. Most of our residents actually experienced a savings of approximately forty to fifty percent in their water bill. So the idea was, what we're going to take away from you in funding the turn lane, we're going to give back to you when we save you X amount of dollars in water. And it has been an objective of our Board for the last six years, never to take without giving better value, and that's what we feel we have accomplished. So people, sometimes are financial constraints, some people think that the city should have done it, some people think the county should have done it. And when we keep on telling our residents that the county, for six years, said, "No," that's his favorite word, "no," we couldn't get anywhere. So when Todd presented the opportunity for this, the Neighborhood Improvement Program, we solicited, we sold, we walked the neighborhood, and we got the vote.
But it's twenty-five dollars a month, don't they think that their property values are going to rise significantly, and when there's safety, getting in and out of your community is part of what this project is going to provide for?
You are preaching to the choir.
Okay.
You might want to add that they actually had water last week, when West Palm Beach did not. So, they had a double benefit this week.
I'm suffering through that right now, my office building, as, yeah. And, yes, you're very lucky that you're not using that water.
And we even got a boost in PSI from Seacoast, so our showers and our sprinklers are throwing out pretty well.
And you get a savings in communication tax as well, by half.
Yeah, exactly.
On top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you live in the city, you're welcome.
So can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I thought the guys want to make motions. Go ahead, guys.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
And I'll second it.
I do, I do want to say one thing also while we're, right prior to this, is, you know, I was there in the very beginning, when you were considering annexing into the city of Palm Beach Gardens, I was at the very meeting in our EOC, and you guys had brought this turn lane up back then, you know, six-plus, seven years ago, and I felt your frustration and your, and the pain that you were going through, but I, you know, I didn't have to deal with the daily pain and frustration for the last six years, so, thanks for sticking with everybody, and thank you, staff, for really working with them to try to find a solution, because, I mean, that's what we are all here for, is to help serve our community, and, and staff takes that very, very, very seriously, as do we, and so we thank you for persevering through this, and we'll get through it to the end, so, hang in there.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, five-zero. And we will move on to items for Council Action Discussion and Items of Interest. The first will be the City Manager Evaluation, and since the guys are so intent on talking, we will let them go first. So Carl, would you like?
You've hardly been the chatterbox in this group tonight. I'll start with the City Manager's Evaluation, since you pointed at me. So Ron and I sat down again this year for over an hour, we discussed, you know, where we've come from, especially also encompassed my five-and-a-half years or whatever I've been up here. So, more like encompassed where we've been since I've been here, and where we're going to go, you know, as long as he's going to be here, so. You know, he's got a firm grasp on the vision, like he always has, staff adores him, the place runs probably as good as any Fortune Five Hundred company in the world, and we all get to benefit from that. So the community appreciates it, we appreciate it, his staff appreciates it, appreciates it, and, you know, he continues to be the, the tip of the spear. So that sums up an hour or so of conversation we had a few weeks ago, and I'm just going to leave it at that.
No, we, we talked yesterday in regards to his performance, obviously the city runs extremely well, the team that is put in place is second to none. Congratulations to all of you on creating such a good group of people that really look out for the organization and for the team, and that comes from leadership, no question, so congratulations on that. We just had some common conversations about how best to communicate beyond the city's borders, to making sure that we as a council are given some tools to try to help, make sure that the communications with our residents, he does share a ton of information with us, how we choose to use that information is always challenging, to, to put it in the best way, but all in all, extremely happy with the performance of the City Manager.
Okay, Joe? I had to write mine down, it's my, my first evaluation of Mr. Ferris, I wanted to do this with the res- I wanted to do this with the respect he deserves. So I did sit with Ron this week, and we spoke briefly. But I took a moment to write a few things. So Ron Ferris is excellent in his performance as our city manager in our well-run city. His achievements are well-known and were described really beautifully last year by Mayor Woods at our July 16, 2020, meeting when we decided to name the building after him. We heard about his excellence in our budget, systems operations, and his staff admiration and the work that we're all grateful for in his last 33 years in the city. So tonight, I'm going to share with you my experiences of this last year. Ron's door is always open. His phone is always answered. He listens, he's thoughtful, he's collegial and informative. And he gives me the tools I need as a relatively new council member to understand the history of our policies here in the city. He has consistently met with me for almost over an hour every week since I was elected to get me up to speed. And he did it in person during COVID as well. In these meetings, he shares unbiased information and analysis that helped me make sound decisions, as well as the resources that I can and do pursue for my own edification. And this year, under his leadership and during COVID, we were provided constant and transparent information, more so than I saw any of my friends that do this for a living receive. He, our city, in collaboration with the county and other resources, created a lauded vaccine location. We provided over $1.3 million in help for our residents and businesses. We talked earlier about the outdoor seating. And our reach, as we discussed earlier as well, continues with our Palm Beach Cares, Palm Beach Gardens Care is Mortgage Assistance Program. And this year, Ron even spearheaded providing in-house cultural competency for every staff member. And I don't think there was any publicity about that. It was just done because it was the right thing to do, especially this year. Ron is a professional, who I have found, does his best working with a statesman, not a politician. And he eyes, is eyes so beautifully on the future of my hometown and not on politics, which I really appreciate. If there is collaboration, I know Ron is the person pushing for everyone to come together to make our entire county a better place. If there is criticism, he's the one who's going to take it. And if there's a compliment or credit to be given, he'll step back and give it to others. So thank you. It's been a good year.
Well, Marcy's been here the shortest period of time, although she does have history here, so.
I've been here the shortest but the longest. Isn't that crazy? But I do, I'll say ditto or echo all of the comments made here today. I know it's your favorite time of year. I'm being facetious. But I feel really, really blessed to live in this amazing city. As I drive through our city and look at the changes that have occurred for the last 20 years, it's amazing, but we still have an absolute beautiful city. And I don't know of any department, actually, that are not award-winning in our city. I can't think of one. You know, one of the reasons that we have such a beautiful, successful, and amazing city is because of Ron and his leadership. And in my tenure on the council in the past, and now I've seen him operate in good times, bad times, very, very, very stressful times. And he's always handled himself with the utmost of professionalism. And I know for sure that he's always had Palm Beach Gardens' best interest at heart with every decision made. I think we heard it today with the, what, $700,000 per year in savings with our healthcare clinic alone, which I was at that first ribbon cutting. And that was a great idea and has really paid out tenfold from what we expected. And there are so many other examples. So with that, I say thank you for everything you do. It is very much appreciated, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
So I guess it's my turn. So I've been meeting with Ron more frequently as I've emerged from COVID. So a lot of what I have said and met with him about has happened over a couple of weeks. We did meet again last week. And I've been very public in my comments about your leadership this past year. And it was a very difficult year for many of our residents and for our staff. And you diligently worked to make sure that we were all safe and that everyone stayed employed, which was a very big thing this year. The two words that come to mind right off the bat are forward thinking and planning. And I think that's why we did get through this past year the way that we did and came out on the other side as strong as ever. Our financial stability speaks for itself. And I doubt that there is a more loyal and highly valued staff in any other city, in the county. And that's a testament to your leadership and relationship with the staff as well. So at this time, I'm extremely happy. What? I, I would say so. And I'm extremely happy to continue my journey as mayor and move forward. And thank you.
How long have you, how long have you been our city manager? 33? Is it 33? 30, what is it?
I'm in the 21st year.
21st year. I mean, I think that's a record.
Looking forward to the next 20.
All right. It is a record.
Other, two quick items of interest. One is congratulations to Chelsea. And I know you want to get out of here because you never had your Leadership Palm Beach County graduation last year. So they're bundling yours with this year's class and going to have a great time. So I will be quick, but I felt this was important. And it kind of builds on what we were just talking about a few minutes ago. This past week has demonstrated the difficult situation that Florida cities and residents can find themselves in due to fluctuations in the availability of clean drinking water. With the disruption of the water cycles leading to more frequent drought and heavier storms, along with the rising seas and increases in the toxic algae growth, like we saw in West Palm, we must plan and execute that plan quickly to secure Florida's clean water supply. It's not an easy task, nor is it one that cities, counties, or states can do alone. It takes a comprehensive and collaborative approach. And I just wanted to let my fellow council members know that there is one. As vice chair of the Palm Beach County Water Resources Task Force, I wanted to provide you all with a brief overview, and I'll be brief, of the Joint Palm Beach County Water Resources Task Force and Broward County Water Advisory Board Workshop that was held yesterday in West Palm. This was the second of these workshops since the formation of the task forces in 2008. And one of the key initiatives, and it's exciting to come out of the initial collaboration, was the Important C-51 Reservoir in Western Palm Beach County, with Phase 1 now under construction. I've provided each of you with the presentations that were presented yesterday in digital and hard copy. I sent an email with the digital copy. You'll see how complicated it is to make all the pieces fit together to both clean and protect our water supply and prevent flooding. Flooding is not something that only affects the coastal areas. And most people in cities like ours don't realize that. Our system of canals runs on a gradient downward to the sea. And the increasing sea levels are starting to cause and will continue to make worse flooding in western non-coastal communities. So funding, the good news, funding was approved last week by President Biden for the Central and South Florida System Flood Risk Management Infrastructure Resiliency Study. And that'll need to be approved by Congress in an appropriations bill for fiscal 2022 before the funding's available. The funding will focus on the project features that can reduce the most immediate risk to changing conditions and the resiliency aspects of the infrastructure that we have in terms of flooding. Speakers at the workshop yesterday included two representatives from the Army Corps of Engineers, South Florida Water Management District, along with representatives from both Broward and Palm Beach Counties and their task force advisory boards. If anyone wants to follow up with me on any of this specific information or know where to get more on it, just please. So, and anyone else have a board report or committee report they want to share?
I just want to say thank you for that. And I also want to thank our staff for the beautiful job with our veterans Memorial Day video. And Rochelle, and especially Lauren Berksen, thank you for highlighting all of her work with the Gold Star families. She is extraordinary. And to have her be the highlight of it was perfect. Thank you.
Rochelle, are you encompassing board reports along into items for discussion?
Resident, items of interest.
Okay, so I'm going to bring something up.
Items of interest, so you can, yes.
Want me to bring it up now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I would like to circle back to the traffic signal and discuss some of the delays that we're now having from Verdinia Baker to our city manager. And I would, we set Max on a course last month to move forward with a lawsuit. And now that they've softly approved this, we still don't have anything in writing. And now we're getting verbal delays from the city, from the county administrator, correct? So, and nobody knew I was going to bring this up. But I would rather keep Max on a course so we are doing what we need to do to get that light in. Because we could be getting, we could be having conversations forever. And I don't want to be, we already had another, what appears to be a minor crash. It's probably going to turn, and Matt's an attorney, it's probably going to turn into an injury, a lawsuit. And that one little crash will probably cost more than the entire traffic signal. So is there a way we can have Max stay on course? Or you can chime in, Max, send Verdinia a letter, go, "You've got 15 days to either approve this or we're moving forward." Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Should we have Max do a city attorney report? Because that's next, and then discuss it as part of that.
You want to, sorry?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, they're beyond the timeline. I think that my recommendation at this point, I mean, you've already authorized me to do whatever I need to do is necessary. I think the best thing to do is to let the city manager continue to work with Ms. Baker and see if we can achieve our objective. You know, we want to get the light. That's the most important thing to us. It's far more important than, and I'm not suggesting you're being vengeful or anything. It's like, I think that it's far more important than punching them in the nose or proving a point. It's about obtaining the permits so that we can put this very important piece of public safety equipment in play. And I'm reasonably confident that that's going to occur. I have all the confidence in the world of our city manager. And so if he comes to me at some point and says, "It's not happening", then rest assured, I will get that signal.
All right, so what you just used is, go, go ahead.
If I might add, I feel your frustration. I certainly did. You know, I've never been accused of being a diplomat, but I'm trying to be very diplomatic about this whole process here because I'm trying to get the things done without conflict at the end and trying to get it done by patiently going through their process. If I can get it done through the process, and timing is everything. We have a little bit more time left before we're prepared to go vertical right now. And I'm in hopes that the permit will be issued by the time we're ready to go vertical. If not, then we'll have another discussion, if you know what I mean.
And I feel like, didn't Verdinia give you her word that the permit will be, or can be obtained now? I mean, it's totally different than what occurred in the past.
And, and that's a good point. It's been a 180-degree turn from they fail, they would not recognize our warrant study to now they recognize it and will issue the permit based upon the rewrite of the interlocal agreement. Typically, I would say on an average, it, we wait two months before we get responses. It's only been one month. But there's a timing issue, and we're getting closer and closer to that timing issue. I have faith that we're going to get the permit. The interlocal may come back with some adjustments that may be made. But we're always as much accommodating as we can be. I'll get you there eventually.
I do have a question, though. Is there a clock that is ticking that would expire? Is there any type of expiration for a condition of approval that would not warrant it for any odd reason or something that's unknown? Because I know, I've gone through the county process, and there is no patience when you go through any county process because it's so-
On the county side?
Yeah, like is there a-
No. There is, no, I don't think there's a clock that's ticking. But there is, the response, there is a responsibility to do your job. And once conditions and things are met, you have a responsibility for issuing the permit. But we're, I'm practicing my patience.
Right, well, you're going to have, you're going to need a lot of practice with the county in general.
I just want us to stay the course. I didn't want us to get into a gray area because they've been bullying us over this one topic for a long time. And they've been punching us in the nose. So none of us, probably mostly me, deals well with bullies. So, and we have Max at our, so.
Are you calling Max a bully?
Speaking of bullies.
I'm not a bully. I, I, I like beating up bullies. So, but this is, like I said, I think that Ron has got this well at hand. And like I said, at some point, if he cries uncle and tells me that it's not working and doesn't, and he needs me to do whatever it is that we need to do, I will do that thing and make their lives very painful.
Okay, I just, I wanted to air it out. Thank you. That's all.
Max, are you done your report? Do you have more to?
No, Emmy, I mean, you know, we got served in the mobility lawsuit, and we're in the process of going through that right now. And they're in the process of responding to certain public records requests that I've propounded. I have a case management conference via Zoom tomorrow at 11:30, which is just a perfunctory scheduling matter. They're trying to put pressure to make this thing move quickly. It's, it's not going to move quickly. They think it is. It's not going to move nearly as fast as they want because I have a lot of discovery to do and several people to depose. So it's not just the simple deck action that they're trying to make it out to be. But that's basically it. But I think we're, I think we're in good shape, and we're working towards that now.
You know, people get so frustrated with government for just this reason. But, you know, we obviously feel we're doing the right thing. The county has accepted the action that the city went forward with. It's just time. So I have 100% confidence that the county administrator and the commissioners will move swiftly to make sure that this light gets installed ASAP, to make sure that all of our residents are safe and not put under harm's way by delaying any further. I have something else. Did you want to?
Well, I can bring it up. That's not-
Okay, but I do have a, well, I have a, I have a good in welfare, if it's all right. So my younger son has been a soccer player forever. And I think I brought up a lot of that in the Palm Beach United. I'm so proud of these guys and playing. They're playing right now. And as long as they tie one more game, they will make it to Nationals, which is a very exciting thing, where they're going to go to North Carolina for the Fourth of July weekend and play with 64 teams from around the country. So those soccer fields, all that time, all that time, going to soccer fields and going to tournaments, all those kids that start when they're six, seven years old, it's just amazing to see. Very excited for them, very excited for, for our teams, our program, the national attention that our fields get and our teams are getting. So as soon as we're done, I get to go watch the second half.
We will be done quickly. I just wanted to mention that we are all a group of doers and we like to interact with our constituents. That's what elected officials do. And the number of emails that have been coming in from them because so much is going on in the city has increased dramatically. When somebody sends us an email, it's often impossible to tell if they send it to you or if they send it individually to each of us. We can see if they send it to the group. So I just want to ask everybody, things were overlapping, where I'd respond to somebody that somebody else had responded, and we didn't know. And they're not always getting the same information. So unless it's somebody you know personally and you're having a rapport with and feel that you need to specifically provide the information, if we can forward those to the city manager, it's not usurping our ability to interact. Respond to the person and tell them, "Thank you for reaching out to me. I want to make sure you get the correct information that you need." And then we can speak as one voice. And then we'll all get a copy of what the response is, if possible, because it's getting very- because it's getting very confusing. And Ron gets 5 million emails, and then I'm like, "Well, wait a minute. Somebody responded here and there, and I guess we're all getting the same thing, so."
And I always copy everyone when we respond, so everyone sees the same response. 99.9 of them are operational issues that we got to figure out and get out.
Well, there was a one today about-
This week it's the train. This week it's like, that was number five on, on the train for me, so, okay. All right, in that case, meeting is adjourned.